Welcome to the select board meeting for Monday, July 26. We call the order at 6:35 PM. Our called go to webinar for our remote meetings. What content is recorded? You can ask questions via the question box or raise your hand feature and we will attempt to take all questions at the discretion of the chair. You can also join in the listen only mode via phone. All questions are also part of the record. We will jump into our 635 business, community development block grant and the CDBG information meeting. We have Brian McHugh here. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. So I'm not muted, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thanks for having everybody, everybody. As Jacob said, this is a community development block grant informational meeting. I wanted to give a little background on the community block grant program. The town has participated in this program 14 times since the early eighties. Basically, the block grant program was established in 1974 through an act of Congress. It sort of is an umbrella program that a lot of different activities can be funded through. It does have to benefit low to moderate income people or persons or families or eliminate slum and blight or meet an urgent need like a national catastrophe. So there's three, three national objectives that all activities have to meet. Those are the three. Benefit to low to moderate income, elimination of slum and blighted areas and then meeting an urgent need. So while the program can, can fund many, many different things, there's five basic categories. One's housing assistance, which is housing rehab programs, lead pain abatement programs, development costs for new housing projects. Unlimited cases, not new housing construction under CDBG and relocation expenses. That's one category. There's public facility categories or a public facility category, which includes senior centers, neighborhood parks, playgrounds, architectural barrier removal projects. There's an infrastructure category, which is typically sidewalks, sewer water and drainage projects. There's then another category is the social service category, which includes a whole slew of different social service activities, including elder nutrition programs, English services or programs for DLL English language learner programs. There's a whole bunch of different things on it. Food insecurity programs. And then there's a planning component also, the fifth thing is planning components, which can, you know, can include pre-development assistance, master plans, things like that can go under that. We have, we've done several housing rehab programs in Irving. Like I mentioned before, there's been 14 of them so far over the years. And basically the housing rehab program that we run is, is a direct benefit to families that are of low to moderate income. Right now we have a waiting list of about three or four people right now, but we just did a mailing in town to, to, to gauge what, what sort of interest there is. So we haven't, it was a townwide mailing. Some of you might've gotten it already. It was postcard that went around. So we haven't nailed down what we're proposing as a housing rehab program with two other towns, Warwick and Northfield. So tomorrow night I'm going to be in Northfield. I was in Warwick last week. There's been an interest for doing a regional activity, a regional program, which we typically do with, with, with smaller towns. So that there's a little bit of some economies of scale there of marketing, reporting to the Department of Housing and Community Development, procuring lead and paint inspectors, that sort of thing. We, you know, to have one individual town, you'd have to have a more robust program to sort of, you know, have it make sense to do in one town. So we typically do regional applications. Irving's always been in the regional with either one, two, three. So one time there was 10 towns way back in the eighties and nineties. So basically, you know, I can, we can go back on those activities that I, you know, the categories I, I talked about. But I, you know, right now I wanted to talk, you know, tonight I want to talk more about doing a housing rehab program. Cause that right now I don't think there are any, any infrastructure projects that are sort of ready to go for an application that's due in September. And plus I know you've gotten some complete streets money, I believe. Is that right, Brian? And some other, some other money to do sidewalks and, and, and in community development black grants can't displace money right now. So if you have money to do that or there's, they're, they're always looking, you know, if you, if there's another avenue to secure funds for some of the projects you might, infrastructure projects you might have going on, they're going to want you to look at that first. So right now, you know, we, we feel confident in writing, you know, and putting together a competitive application with the two other towns based on past experience in Irving and any other towns and our, you know, our, the success of our program. Since the early eighties, basically we've, we've rehabbed over 2,800 projects or houses in Franklin County since then. We have actually never been, we've never not gotten a housing rehab grant in the years I've been there, which is since 1990. So we do have a pretty good track record and we feel like we can put something very competitive together. But anyway, so Brian, Brian pulled up the, our housing rehab program outline. I've touched on a little bit of this already, this, that the, the program's designed to be the, the national objective benefiting low to moderate income folks. And, and by, you know, addressing, you know, sanitary code violations, building code violations, electrical plumbing issues at households. Did someone just say something? Someone asking a question? I heard, I heard a voice. No. Okay. Maybe it's in my head. So anyway, so you know, so you know, again, programs designed to correct code violations, but also to do energy efficiency upgrades on houses. You know, weatherization, insulating houses, you know, replacing outdated inefficient heating and hot water tanks with energy star rated, you know, appliances. And, and basically, so the way that works with us is that, you know, we, we qualify people, again, they have to be of low to moderate income. So we put them through an application process and qualify applicants to make sure that they, they do meet the income guidelines. Income guideline, the income limits are 80% of the area median income, which is right around this under $40,000, $50,000 right now for one person. And it goes up about five, four, five, $6,000 per household man, member from there. But that's, that's something it's, it's, it's the income that's set, you know, through the US census and there's, you know, you know, it's 80% or under. So we qualify folks, make sure they, you know, the houses are owned by applicants, make sure that they have insurance, make sure they're up to date on their, their real estate taxes. Their, you know, state and federal taxes, one has to be up to date on those things. And so then, you know, once they're approved from the very approved, we do inspections each of the households and do a work write-up on what needs to be done to bring the house up to code, basically. And so we put up, we put together bid specifications, the projects go out to bid, we have a list of qualified contractors that owners can use. They don't have to use someone on, that's on that list. If they choose someone outside the list, we make sure they have the proper licenses and insurance to bid on the projects and they're not excluded from, from bidding on and, and being awarded federal contracts. So we do a check on that also. But, you know, and to just to back up a little bit, if a house is built before 1978, we, we do have to do some level of lead testing at each house, even if there aren't children living there, the money comes down through HUD. So there's a, let's say housing rule that we have to follow, which means that we have to do a certain amount of, of lead remediation, sometimes fully letting if their children under six. Sometimes it's just interim controls. It's, it's up to us to, to take the, the most stringent path, whether it's this, you know, some, some of the state rules are more strict than the federal rules and vice versa. So we're charged with understanding the regulations and putting people through the, the proper path so that we meet both the state and the federal guidelines. Once we're through with a project, so we procure the lead inspectors through, through 30, chapter 30B procurement requirements. So once we, you know, we get that, if, if it is a house that was built before 78, we'll have an inspector go through right up. What's, you know, what, what kind of hazards are, are lead hazards are at the property and then that, that goes into our, right up for the whole house. So again, getting to that point where we, we bid the projects out, we have a bid opening and the, the contracts are awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. It's public money. We have to do the procurement that way. Unless there's a compelling reason why someone owner doesn't want a particular contractor at the house will, will have to have a record of that. There may be some, there's, there's different reasons why that might happen. But essentially, so once the bids are accepted, we, we write up contracts for the contractors, there's standardized contracts that are accepted by the state. We do, you know, we do a loan closing, do a notice for, to proceed to the contractors. You know, we do a title, title and search on the property and make sure there aren't leans on the property, make sure that they're not underwater. We don't want to loan out the money that the town receives to, to a household that maybe, you know, may owe more than a, than a, you know, than the house is worth, let's say. So, so we do all those things and then we see the project through, you know, when the, the, the contractors bill us directly. We go out and do inspections of the work, make sure it's done properly. We make sure that the permits are pulled. We make sure that they, that the municipal officials sign off on the project at the end, whether it's electrical plumbing, building inspector, lead inspector, board of health for septic systems and wells. But we also have the, the owners sign off on all, all payments too. So it isn't just us saying it's good. You gotta, you gotta sign off on this. It is a loan to each of these households. It's a 0% deferred payment loan. There are no payments on it. There's a new funding mechanism now, or the terms have changed since the last time that the town went through this. It was, it was 2015, I believe is last, last time you participated in this project, this program. Right now the, the terms are much better and they're, they were always good, I felt, but they're better in that the loans go away after 15 years. They're, they're, they're forgiven over the course of 15 years. If you sell your property prior to that 15 year period, it's pro-rated. The way that we have it set up is that it's, your loan is forgiven at one fifteenth per year over the course of 15 years. So someone sells or transfer the property in that term, then they owe, you know, it goes back into, you know, right now we have a, an agreement with the town for that money to go recycle back into a revolving loan account where we reloan that money to other people. And, and we've been doing that in Irving where we've gotten payouts from previous loans. And then we were able to, in, in years where there's the program going in town, we're able to meet some need that we get. Are you hearing that, that voice too, everybody? Yeah, okay.
But just, just a second, Brian. Pete, are you, if you're on, I think you're not muted.
I think that's unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
I don't see you on the list, so you must be just called in. Maybe. I can't hear you if you're talking now, so. Should be good. Sorry to interrupt you, Brian. I heard it too.
That's quite all right. And so I think it was just saying, I was just sort of wrapping up how, how the program works. So we, so we, you know, we oversee the projects as, as they're happening through to the end, we make sure that the, the projects, you know, that the work is done according to specs, it's done properly. We act as a liaison between homeowners and contractors. It may step in if there's any, you know, any, any issues that may come up. So, you know, the feedback we've gotten from a lot of owners is that it's, it's good to have someone, a middle person there to, to sort of work through some of the, the difficulties sometimes that go along with, with having worked on, on your house. But anyway, so, so what I was saying was that the loans are, you know, are forgiven over the course of 15 years. And so in the future, you're not going to necessarily be replenishing that fund that you have. Because as long as, as we go forward, this is not a rule that we put in place. It's the rule state wanted to see. Cause it felt like people were being overburdened by some of these loans, because they, they go up to $40,000 now, whereas in the old days, when I started, it was $15,000. So it's, it's become a bigger, you know, a bigger loan. And the state felt like there were, again, there would be, some folks would be in overburdened. And in the spirit of the program is to, to serve a population that can't necessarily go to the bank to get a loan to do their roof or do their septic system and such. And oftentimes they're, they're at the limit of what they're, what they own a house and what they, what the houses value that. So program is designed to sort of meet that, that, that need, that, that population that, that doesn't have the ability to, to get a conventional loan. Having said that, your past loans are still in place and they'll continue to come in. And right now the outstanding loans for Irving alone is 1.6 million dollars that we've loaned out over the course of, you know, the years. That's not, that doesn't even count the ones that have been paid back, but that's what's out there right now. So that fund will continue to be replenished, you know, for many years, hopefully, you know. So it's, that's, that's good news for the town. There's some towns that don't really have much funding in them right now. Right now we, what we have in, in-house is about 40, what is it? 40 something thousand dollars that we have, $42,000 that we have in your, in, in the account that we hold for you to loan out. And if, and if this, this grant is awarded, anybody that's in, in-house has to be, you know, has to be put into the grant also. So we'll have to spend that down also. But you know, when you have 1.6 million out there, it'll continue to replenish itself for, for quite a while right now. So, so what, you know, part of what we do also is there's loan servicing on this. So with these loans that, you know, that are out there, we often are asked to subordinate to them because the loans are written in our name. So we, there's loan servicing for some of these projects where, you know, anytime there's anybody is refinancing their house or what have you, they're asking us for subordination. So we have to go through a process to make sure that they're, you know, we're still being good stewards of your money way down the line still, you know, so we look at it and say, and, and we do, you know, to make sure that they, they can, you know, they can afford what they're getting and that you're not, we're not putting you in a position where you're way down the line and you don't, you're not going to recover that money. Having said that, we do get forgiveness requests sometimes for hardship cases. And the agreement that we have with you, which was signed back in 2012 or 2013, was a 10-year, a 10-year agreement. And in that agreement, it allowed us to, to to entertain subordination or forgiveness requests. And then we have a committee that reviews these. And if it is a hardship case, then, you know, sometimes we, there is a forgiveness that has, you know, should happen or else, you know, someone's going to lose everything sometimes. So we try to, again, trying to be good stewards of that and not just rubber stamp it. You know, we do look at it and make sure that we're, we're being careful with your money. So that's, that's about it in a nutshell, the program. And I was just hoping to get your support to move forward with putting together an application. We do not have the final numbers yet because again, we've had, we did a mailing. And we're trying to, from each of the three towns, we're trying to, you know, sometime in the next three or four weeks, we'll have a better, a better, well, we have to have a number by that point. Cause we're going to have to do a, a public hearing probably towards the end of August, you know, a month from now. Because the grants are due September 10th. So it is a, it's sort of a truncated application period this year. We were, the, the grants last year were delayed seven months with COVID. So we got awarded in January, whereas we normally are awarded in the middle of the, the past summer. And then they were going to skip a year and not even do a grant this year and do it, have them do next March. And there was a pushback because it was going to be hard to maintain capacity and not having grants going, because we usually have several grants going over the, that are overlapping three years in several different towns. So we had, you know, not just those, but a lot of people pushed back. So the state said, okay, fine. We're having, we'll have them do in September now. So we sort of had to be careful what we wish for else. It was like grants are now, we're now doing three months from when we thought, you know, usually we have it like, it's usually, we know the grants are always due in, in March. And we didn't really know when they're going to be doing this year. So there will be, you know, a public hearing again, just in about a month's time. And I apologize for not having the numbers nailed down right now, but we literally just sent the, the mailing out last week. We felt like we were getting enough calls from Irving already from people and have a, a waitlist right now. You know, just a few, three or four people on it. But when we're not advertising it, we don't really know what the need is. So we want, we wanted to do the mailing and get it out there. And also have this kind of this meeting so the word can get out and people can contact us. And if, you know, we're thinking it could be anywhere from a 12 unit for, you know, between the three towns or 18 units or maybe 20 years. It really depends on how many, how many responses we get back. So. But I'm, you know, again, I'm just looking for support. I don't know if you need, if you want to have, discuss any of this or, but eventually I'd like to have, you know, I don't know how it works with, with your town. Every town's different, but I'd like to have like vote to sort of go forward with putting together an application in your, you know, on your behalf. There's, there's, we, we put together the, the application, we administer the application. There's no money that the town puts up. We get our percentage or, or, or operating cost or admin fee out of the grants. It's 27% of the total grant. I know that might sound like a lot, but there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into these rehab programs. There's a lot of work in, on each of the projects that we do. And there's a lot of reporting. There's a lot of understanding regulations and keeping up on regulations. And all that. So I would just say that, you know, when it's, we feel like it's a fair, it is something that's, again, in part of the application that we can, we can take that percentage. So.
Thank you, Ryan. Open up for the board with any questions or anyone in the public and then, you know, if, if we're looking to support it. My question, I'll start was just, do you have an ETA and when you expect to hear back from the public or when the cutoff is from the mailing?
The mailing? Yeah, we I don't know that we give anybody a deadline because sometimes that, that deters people from, but we're looking for like in the next three weeks to have the, have a, a, a good number. Cause at the public hearing, we have to have that number set. So I could, I could touch base with Brian, keep you abreast on that, but we just, you know, some, the people have already responded. I don't have the number in front of me, but I do know that people have called in right away. So yeah, I'll have a better number for you, Jacob, on that.
Okay.
In three weeks, let's say, I, I know you're asking for a timeline there.
Good enough.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Familiar with the program. Like you said, it's been around for quite some time.
Great.
You know, anything?
No, I have nothing at this, at this time.
Would one of you like to make a motion to either support or not the CBG grant program? This, this round?
I make a motion to support the upcoming community development block grant on behalf of the town of Irving.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. I think next steps is going to be to, you know, you'll gather feedback and get the, the details of the grant application and what it's going to look like for the three towns, assuming that all three are, are going to apply together. And then we need to have a public hearing regarding that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. So you can coordinate with Brian once we get to that point and, you know, scheduling that and we'll, and we'll get that planned as, as we get to that point.
That's great. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks for coming and presenting. Have a good night.
You too, bye.
Next item of business on the agenda is discussion regarding town response to COVID-19. Any updates, Brian, on that front?
No major updates other than like rest of the world, there's a new variants making its way through the country and we are, we're not immune to that. And so our case count remind, remains low, but we have had reports of urban cases. So people should continue to practice their due diligence and, and take all necessary precautions.
And, and just to be clear though, there are new variants that isn't to indicate that the cases here are or are not that variant, correct?
Fair. That's correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah. On COVID this time? Oh, Brian, one question. Do we have an ETA on the UV and discussion around opening town hall?
We had reached back out to our HVAC vendor because the town hall was the remaining facility to have those purifiers installed and we were expecting to do follow-up last weekend with the state of emergency. To be honest, that completely escaped my mind, but I will fall from that tomorrow morning.
Just to keep it, keep it on the list.
My apologies also, Jake. I meant to reach out last week also and last week disappeared quickly.
Not that you all didn't have other more pressing issues to deal with. It was just a question if we had the, the details, not totally understand.
We'll definitely get that answer to the three of you.
The library construction project? We have any updates there?
Still just working on the, the punch list items. We, we're trying to coordinate both the general contractor to come back and work on some, some outstanding items that were on their list, plus our security vendor to do some coordination between their two offices. So hopefully we can make a little more progress on that over the next two weeks.
And I did, I did speak with the chair, the library trustees to, about moving over the state aid that they had pledged for the grant program, for the grant or pardon me, as part of the grant for the library. And he said to be reviewing it. So we can touch base with him. Maybe after their next meeting and see if that's sorted out.
I will follow up.
River Warner Straffin Street project. I believe we are at the point where we're ready to generally close this out. My belief Glenn, you and your team are going to just finish the insulation and that's, and that's the last piece, correct?
That's the last piece for us. We've asked that the contractor come out and clean out catch basins and all the water gates that had Millings in them and Blacktop and some of the others before they, before they get paid. I think it should be, but yes, as for street signs, we'll take care of those.
Brian, is that the last item before we'd release the retainer and everything else at this point?
That's correct. We did ask for a pay requisition on the balance minus the, the retainage and I did not receive that in time last week. So if it's received this week, we'll be processing that for next.
Questions on River Warner Straffin?
Yeah.
We will pass over the review of the IFPs for the graded school and the IP mail or RF files at this time. And we will pass, oh wait, we do have some meeting minutes here. Sorry, mouse is not working. Go ahead.
Disposition request.
I'm sorry, Brian.
It's just very slow. There you go. Your next item on your list was your disposition request.
Yes, and I skipped over that. So surplus property disposition request for this 40 yard steel roll-off dumpster. This is the second read. We probably want to discuss the review of the FY22 surplus equipment or the where is it on here?
The very last item on your agenda.
For some reason, this is the last item on my agenda. Maybe I'm looking at a different. Maybe I'm looking at the old agenda. I'm looking at the one in the packet. Anyway, apologies. There's the procurement for the replacement to discuss. You have that, Brian, in the packet?
Yeah. So it's a, it's an email correspondence from the, the, it's slowly, slowly updating. For some reason my, my connection's a little slow today. So I apologize.
But anyway, I wanted to, to recap, I wanted to touch on the replacement procurement discussion while we're talking about surplusing it because that was part of the capital plan for FY22. However, the cost has come in significantly higher than the money that was allocated in the budget. So just wanted to touch base on what's our plan there before we get closer to deciding to get rid of the one we have, although I know it's not functional, but.
Right. And Glenn obviously can, can correct me if I'm incorrect in any of these points. We, we own the, the roll-off. Obviously that's why there's a, there's a surplus equipment request. It was identified during inspection. Um, it was identified during inspection last year for needing replacement, so the hauler is at the point where they no longer will transport it. Which is why we submit the, the capital request. On the state contract, um, FEC one thirteen. Is the contract we're using for the basis of that, five thousand dollars is the price it was last year when we recorded. That's what was imported in the. In the capital plan, we then submitted on July first, we reached out to say we're ready to order, and, uh, when we submitted our request for an updated. Cost proposal so that we could place the order, we were informed that the cost has skyrocketed by thirty-six hundred dollars. So the new cost is now eighty-six hundred dollars for the same item, um, just, just seven months ago. And noted that steel is jumping, uh, in cost every, every couple of weeks by a few percentage points, so. Jan, I mean, who you all met with previously, um, she's the one who assisted us with any of our waste-related items. And deals with all of the vendors on the state contract with us. Um, she's just letting us know that you do have other options. We, we originally were leaning away from renting for a month-to-month on a, uh, new dumpster. But now seeing that the cost is, has increased so significantly in, in just a few months. We wanted to bring that back to your attention as an operating option. We could rent for a few months and then. Reassess the possible cost later in the year, and, uh, if costs have come back down, then make a purchase. Did I get that right, Glenn?
Yes, and I, I believe the rental cost, I, I think it was around thirty-four dollars a month.
Approximately.
Thirty-four?
Yes.
Yeah, this is going to be about four hundred dollars. If the rent one is about four hundred dollars a year. Maybe a little more, um, unless those prices go up.
Do you have any idea approximately how long we had the last one, Glenn?
It was here before I got here fourteen years ago. I can check and see if there's a welded date on it tomorrow when I get in.
Mostly curiosity, I figured it outlived the cost, but I just wanted to verify that. Go ahead, Bill.
I was, uh, a question to Brian and to Glenn, um. I would assume that you can't rent month-to-month, um, that doesn't seem to make sense, so. Is there, is there a period of time that you, uh, that you're required by, by contract on, on the renting? Is it a year or? Six months or?
From what I understand with talking to Jan, when she gave me that option is towns rent them yearly, um, until they get ready to be replaced. Um, so it's not like you have to have a six-month contract, a year contract. She says many towns just rent them and not purchase them.
Thank you. When it was just five thousand dollars, it made sense to us. We assumed the useful life was well in excess of ten years. Um, so it made sense for us to purchase now, now seeing this cost. It makes us reconsider that.
Yeah, yeah, gentlemen. Yes, I, I know, I, I can speak up from my experience with our, um, grit dumpster that we use. It's, it was worth it for us to rent it, because when it starts to rust out, um, if the wheels or the landing skids. On them start to collapse, if they're weighted too much, whatever, um, it's covered underneath the rental fee, my two cents.
I'm inclined to think maybe we rent for six months to a year. I mean, I'm kind of thinking a year, because I don't think the market's going to reverse that quickly. And then reevaluate if a purchase is back down in a area that makes. Makes it cost-effective to own. I, I don't know. I don't know what you guys think.
So, I was just crunching some numbers. I mean, you know, if the price doesn't fluctuate much, renting it annually at, you know, just shy of four hundred. You got a little over twenty years, you know, before you hit the eighty-six hundred mark that we would have to pay for it this year, so. To me, it's cost-effective to just rent it right now, um, for whatever time period is needed.
I agree.
Yeah, even at, uh. Even at five thousand, you know, a useful life of, say, fifteen years, uh, at, at a five thousand dollar cost and four hundred dollars a month, you're still. Twelve and a half years, uh, equals itself out.
So if, if the three of you would like us to rent, we could process that this upcoming week and get that in, in motion. And Glenn and I can continue to, to monitor if, if those prices come back down. And inform you in the spring, if we're seeing it come back down and see if you want to make a change then.
I'd agree with that.
I like that option.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess circling back to the first agenda item of the two that we're discussing, uh, any other concerns with? The second read on the, um, scrap of the existing rusted roll-off?
I have no concerns.
None.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead and, uh, work on a rental, and I think we feel that a year is probably okay, and, uh, revisit it when. Prices come down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a review of meeting minutes, which we will pass over.
To.
Following that, discussion regarding the July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one state of emergency. Brian, Glenn, I don't know, either you want to kind of give a heads, uh, uh, an update on anything? That has occurred since our emergency meeting of note, just high level. Or Phil, I know, I believe Phil is here as well, um, but I know you were probably catching up today on what has happened as well.
Yeah, still working on, so we did some more work on Wheelock, uh, Street today. All the major washouts are now filled in, um, Thursday night before we left at six-thirty. Uh, we made sure all the major stuff was all filled in and passable. Um, some roads are still not two lanes, Popper Mountain is still not two lanes, uh, just because of the, the rock that we used to fill it in. Emergency personnel, all them, uh, can get up here, more moors can get up through there. Kavanaugh Lane, uh, the state took over the repair of the washout on the top of Kavanaugh Lane and Forest Street. All the way down Kavanaugh Lane with some, uh, the millings they used for, um. Some curving type stuff up top, and then they put a bunch of riprap in down at the bottom where the washout was. Recreated the swale to direct the water where it's supposed to be. Mountain Road, we worked on Mountain Road last week, filling in a lot of the washouts, still more work to do in the, the swales and. Catch basins and direct inlets. North Street is down to one lane where the head wall, uh, needs to be repaired. Uh, we installed stop signs and they're working as planned. For the most part. I'm sure, I'm sure I'm missing something else, but as of right now, every, everything is, is open and passable. And the, the safety is back in check. We do have some bids for the removal of the Swamp Road Bridge that is continuing to sink over the weekend. Um, I kept an eye on it weekend, um, and we do have proposals for the removal of that also tonight. And the repair of the, the head wall.
Thank you, you and, and the whole team for everything, getting us to where we are and the long days involved, um. Before we jump into those procurements, uh. We should probably give DOT a thank you next time we're talking with them as well for working on Kavanaugh for us and bringing that up to. Up the stuff while they were out there. Uh, I believe I did see barrels out near, um, POTW number three on Route Two by, um. In the area Maple Ave there where that undercutting is there, so I'm assuming they're. At the very least aware, and, and obviously, we've had those discussions, I have no idea, you know, I'm sure that will be a little while before we get to a repair there.
It's actually.
Give you an update on that.
Yep, they, uh, they pushed back all the material that had fallen down into the, the plant area. Uh, built a nice shelf, brought in some large riprap, worked their way from the bottom up as far as they could. Um, there were about four triaxial loads worth of riprap, six to eight inch riprap that was being put in there today. And I believe they even got the paved swale done, um, this afternoon by the time we were coming back out of there too.
Okay, then.
Four o'clock, the swell was completed.
Yeah, CNA has, has been doing a great job for the state.
Well, they're the ones who did the sidewalk project, correct?
The same company, yes. Different crew, yeah, same company. I know that they've been working up sixty-three also in the Northfield, um, on washouts between us and the Northfield Town Line also.
Excellent. Uh, we did a walk, um. Day is escaping me last week. Friday, whatever day it was, um, with DEP, uh, DP, right, Mark Stenson from DP and, and the CONCON. Have some of the CONCON to look at some of the damage along Key Up and, uh, understand what. What that looks like for people and what, you know, what kind of options there are for the town and for the private citizens to, to work on that. Brian, I believe you and Mariah were working on some details with CONCON on what, uh, what. Private parties can do and, and how they would go about that. No, I don't think we have that complete yet to, to give out to the public, but we are getting ready to. Offer that information, is that correct?
Mariah, and Mariah's on this call too, so she can add to that if, if, uh, if I misspeak, but, uh, she's drafted the correspondence to send out to residents in the. Neighborhood of, of North and Church, um, to let them know what, what the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over and what they can do to offer. Um, some emergency permits, um, to remind folks to take a look at their deeds, understand the legal ownership of some of these, these walls. I know that that issue came up while we were meeting with folks, and to acknowledge the fact that this, uh, this issue with Key Up Brook is, is a complex issue. It's crossing multiple boundary lines, it's, it's both wa, a waterway that has been channelized over, over decades, if not. Centuries and, uh, and it has a natural flood plain, which our built environment exists in, and so trying to. Try to find some type of remedy that, that balances those two, those two issues, um, is likely, uh, complicated. Both, uh, from a infrastructure standpoint and a regulatory standpoint, as well as a cost standpoint. So we'll at least have, uh, some of that work, um, hopefully, uh, at least this initial conversation and some of the emergency repair work with private parties. Done in the short, um, in the short term, and then we will also be looking, um. To bring in some other state agencies to have conversations with some of our other landowners around what long-term solutions may look like. Um, I believe Mariah has the next state visit scheduled for this Friday, uh, with the Division of Ecological Restoration. Does that sound right?
Excellent.
Um, the other thing that we were able to do, uh, which is in your packet, is secure emergency procurement authorization from DCAM. To deduct some of the repair work that needs to be done, and I've also secured emergency spending authorizations from, uh, the Department of Revenue. Um, because obviously we did not have a fund already established for these purposes, so, um, the three of you needed some. Some spending authority to be able to conduct the work that you need to consider, so, um, those two things have been, um, approved and they were in your packet.
And emergency spending authorization is up to two hundred thousand, correct, currently?
Correct.
And obviously, we'll still continue to try to pursue options for state and federal money that, that would, uh, cover those costs and. Replenish that account rather than having to go to tax, um, for FY twenty-three. The, the, go ahead.
I, I can speak to that, so the state is, uh, MEMA is still gathering up, uh, the damage assessments. Um, we'd need to meet the cap for the region, which I believe was set about ten million, um, you know, for all of West Pass, all four, all four of the counties that saw some devastation. Uh, along with that, so, um, um, the last meeting I had with MEMA on Thursday afternoon, uh, they felt. Like, uh, it was much better than the Tuesday evening when they said we weren't going to meet the cap, they, it's kind of seemed like they were going to, uh, they seemed. Like we were going to meet the cap, so I, hopefully we see some federal reimbursements on, on some of these projects, but, uh. It's going to be a long time, especially for that Swamp Road Bridge. Uh, we all know that some of those bridges had some issues. Burner are just now getting, uh, fixed up there in the hill, so. Now, we expect to be fast-tracked through that process, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we need to have all the estimates in, into MEMA by the thirtieth. Uh, which shouldn't be a, a heavy lift, uh, you guys did a great job taking pictures and all that, uh. And, and I think we can get a pretty good estimate on, on the repairs that have been done and, and still need to be done.
Chief Wanka, does that estimate include a replacement bridge cost estimate by then?
I'm going to include it with that when we, when we submit the, so the initial, the initial cost estimates, um, you know. Really what it is, on the damage, and then, um, they'll, they'll start digging deeper into it, hopefully. Hopefully we meet the cost estimates and then those, those come down less than, um, what they are, but, uh. You know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can at least hit that cap and then start getting some federal funds, at least getting a ball rolling on federal funds to declare to the. To declare a widespread disaster.
Brian, any concerns with getting an estimate on that bridge replacement cost by then? From our engineers?
We, we had that discussion earlier.
You're on mute, Brian, I'm sorry.
Well, that took. All the energy out of that response. Um, unfortunately, the answer is yes, it would take us quite some time to get you, uh, an accurate estimate. We can get you a high-level ballpark, um, and maybe use the work that we've done to date on Church Street Bridge. As a basis for what may need to be done for, um, Swamp Road. There's a lot of questions in, in the site visit that we have with DEP, and, and I think this Friday's visit will also be informative. If we're trying to restore Key Up Brook to its natural banks, our, uh, our bridge structures are not. Allowing the natural banks to function the way that they are. It, it's built sort of into those banks and it creates, uh, um. The analogy that was being used as a fire hose, y- you're creating a, a confined space, you're channelizing that, and of course, then you're pressurizing that water, so. Um, there was a conversation about whether or not the town needs to consider. Building back onto the, the, the natural embankments, and obviously, a longer expense means a different type of structure. It potentially could mean increased costs, um, so I, I think we have the church tree estimates to date as our, as our beginning point. But without some firm study out there, uh, I can't give you a firm price. So.
Well, it should be a significant contribution to the ten million dollar number, that's for sure.
Oh, several million.
I lost my train of thought after that one, Chief Wanka, where I was headed with the conversation, but I, I know we have a couple of procurements to consider now, uh, oh, DCAM, so. Um, Brian applied for the DCAM waiver for, uh, the swamp, swamp road bridge removal and the North Street. Embankment repair along, along, just up from the bridge, and both were approved, so, uh, I guess we might as well jump into those two.
Yeah, so I, I did originally tell the state about the totality of our damage. Their response back was that very clearly the town had an emergent situation and we needed to act quickly. So they had no concerns with approving a, uh, an emergency waiver. The issue was they needed to find projects. So, um, I have to date now submitted, um, the emergency waiver requests. For specifically the damage to Key Up Brook, uh, around Swamp and North Streets. So it's specifically around the bridge removal, and it's specifically around repairing the side of North Street from damage of Key Up Brook. Um, in that specific area, so, um, they have authorized us to waive the advertising requirements under chapter one forty-nine. You all, as the select board in an emergency situation, obviously you've declared it to an emergency, you can waive the multiple, um. Bids in our normal. Bids in our normal bidding process for our chapter thirty thirty-nine M procurement, which is what this is. Um, so we didn't need state approval for you to waive that. You have the authority to do that if it's an emergency. Um, and obviously, the nature and the scope of the work must be limited to what would resolve the the emergent issue, so. Future replacements of the bridge is not covered under this, but it it will deal with the the initial removal.
So that being said, I believe um Glenn, you you have a quote, a an estimate from a contractor for the. North Street repair of the retaining wall there. Which obviously will depend on what they uh discover as they. Remove block and and repair it, it may fluctuate, but I believe you have one quote for that, and then I believe you're able to secure two quotes for the bridge removal, correct?
Yes, I'd asked, uh, actually had three contractors out there for the bridge removal and only two submitted quotes. And as it stands right now for the the repair of the bridge, it'd be removing the top layer of blocks. Um, if the bottom row is still stable, then we'll they'll buil- build off of that. But if the flow is down low enough to where it can uh securely take out the bottom blocks. And then we'll start with riprap from there, so it keeps a wider uh wider water path uh down through this, so we're not restricted restricted any further.
I believe Glenn started with uh bridge, but he might retain it all.
Retain well, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And it's roughly sixty feet worth of repair work.
The repair of the or reset of the guardrail and such is stuff we'll be doing, or is that something the contractor's doing as part of that repair?
No, that'll be a separate contractor. I'll have to reach out to Andrea Wood and see who was um who was through the for cog. Um, who got the bids for that. It's very minimal companies now that come out and do that.
So this estimated twenty-two thousand five hundred from uh Sam Browning Junior Trucking would do the retaining wall repair. And and repair of the the edge of the road and the base there, and then we we probably still need it closed until we can get the um. The guardrail that has to be removed, repaired, and replaced or reset, right?
Um. It it probably should be, but as as he backfills around those posts, they'll they'll be just as strong and secure as what they were prior to it. Um, washing away. Um, the guardrail people could be months out. So I don't know if we want to keep that down to one lane. I I think the road would be safe enough. Once that is all backfilled and uh he packs material around the uh material around the guardrail post, I think it'd be safe enough to open back up.
So we're not, he's not having to remove the guardrail to do the work?
Correct.
Okay.
At this point, he should be able to do everything over the guardrail.
Okay, I know at one point there was some discussion about removal, so. Yeah, that's where my question came from. Any questions or concerns about this uh quote and moving forward?
None.
None. Uh, the only question I have is the um Swamp Road Bridge demolition. Um, by Clayton Davenport Trucking. And I guess it's the cost of removal.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, no, it just seems extremely high, seventy-five thousand dollars. I I can remove that for twenty-five, fifty, a hundred. Um, I I don't I don't know why it would cost seventy-five thousand to to take down a wooden bridge. It's a.
That's that's a con- that's a concrete bridge, Bill. This this is the concrete bridge. It's right off of North Street over Swamp Road. It's just like the way it's built, the same as the church street structure.
Okay. Seventy-five thousand still seems like a lot of money to me. I mean. We can't do that ourselves?
No, we we don't have. It's it's huge jackhammers that run off of big excavators. Uh, that has to be able to bust through that. They may even have a company come in and either one of them, either uh Sam Browning Junior or. Or Davenport, so they may have a company come in um with big saws. I think they're like three or four foot diameter saws. And cut it into sections before they before they jackhammer it out. I I've never seen this process done. Um, I've driven by many bridge projects, um, you know, through Vermont and New Hampshire. And it's very large equipment that does this work. And you got trucking, you got disposal fees of the con- of the concrete. Concrete's not cheap, even if even if we take busted up concrete from slabs and in blacktop, they charge a lot of money by the ton for disposal of it.
Glenn, did we specify that it couldn't be jackhammered?
So.
Or no?
That was before that we knew the sewer line did not go directly under the swamp swamp road bridge. Even under the brook, it's it's about fifteen feet away from it um to the north of the bridge, so. It is able to be jackhammered. We're just concerned about it dropping. And, you know, and potentially causing problems uh breaking the sewer line underneath.
Do they end up craning these pieces out of there too, as they're getting them out, or is it?
They'd probably use an excavator with a with a thumb bucket on it to grab the pieces out as they're dropping in.
I I don't know, Bill. I mean, I I have no idea. I've never done this either. I was actually expecting hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, honestly.
I'll be honest with you, I was too.
Yeah, I I've seen enough uh jobs over the years, you know, working that uh I was surprised that it was under a hundred.
Is this a contracting company? I mean, it says says David Davenport Trucking.
Yes, but both, both of them.
Understand.
Both of the companies that bid on this, they're excavating companies. Um, yeah, you know, they's they do bridge work, they do demolition work, uh they build roads, they dig foundations for. For houses, replace sewer structures, sewer lines. Um, but both of these, both of the quotes, the companies are very capable of doing the work.
Okay.
My my big thought was I I expected to see a, you know, a big crane come sit down there, pick it up in one peat, one pick and. Set it on the other side of Swamp Road, then take it apart. Um, you have power lines that are sitting right over the top of it in the most inconvenient location. Um, so it has to be demoed in place.
So because this is an emergency, do um do we have to follow um Conservation Commission um? Permitting and DEP permitting?
We we've already done that. Uh, we met with David Bruhl. He has given us a emergency thirty-day permit. Um, whatever we need to do to repair the wall and remove the bridge.
And we don't need anything from DEP?
Uh, he was out there, Mark Stenson was out there on Friday, and if I I was only in on part of that, and I think that we're all set there too, correct, Brian?
Yeah, you're on mute, Brian.
It's been Monday, I'm sorry. Uh, what I was saying, sir, is that the Conservation Commission has the jurisdiction over issuing the permits. Uh, DEP is copied on every one of them and has the sort of the final review of the permits, but they're the ConCom to issue. And so the matter was discussed with Mark Stenson. He's the the uh DEP liaison to our Conservation Commission. Um, and he did give advice on how the Conservation Commission would be best to structure these permits, but. Um, but did default that they are the ConComs to issue. Um, and they are only good, as um I believe Glenn just noted, for thirty days from the issuance, so. Um, it really is related just to the the emergency repair and and nothing beyond that.
David made it very clear that there is no extensions on these thirty-day permits.
Correct.
And the work is just to. Mitigate the emergent situation and or restored to prior condition, so like repairing the retaining wall is just enough to. Make it safe and bring it back to equivalent to what it was. It's not to do. More improvements or or do other things to mitigate future issues, which we may consider down the road, but this doesn't cover that.
Right, right.
Um, Bill, I think uh I'm sure you noticed in there, but we did, we did get to um estimates for the bridge removal. Um, Sam Browning Junior, who. Provided the estimate for the retaining wall, also provided an estimate for the bridge removal, which was slightly less at sixty-seven thousand fifty dollars.
Yes.
And yes, both are trucking companies, but they do a lot more than that. I remember seeing the massive cranes. Davenport has some massive crane equipment.
And just to to add, emergency waiver, while we can advert, we can, the state has waived the advertising requirements and you can. You can uh waive the traditional bidding process. Um, we are still held to prevailing wage. We're still held to um a twenty-five payment, twenty-five percent payment bond. So there's all of these things that have to be put into place with this contractor to still meet the other conditions of master law. Um, so in other ways, this is still a very much a a public procurement as as you're accustomed to with the sewer projects or anything else.
Am I correct, Glenn, that both contractors are in a position to do this work unless they're, well, probably closer to twenty-five days now?
Uh, yes, um, Sam Browning uh Junior Trucking said that they could start the wall on Wednesday if all went through tonight. Um. And and you know, we'd probably start right on the the bridge removal too, because he's already there shortly right afterwards. Save him on mobilizing equipment, and that's probably what the difference in the price is um is the mobilizing fees.
I will just comment. I've been keeping an eye on the bridge too, um occasionally checking on it, and uh I did notice there's a. There was some foot traffic who were crossing the bridge and. You know, checking out the areas that that were cordoned off and marked as closed, um, you know, for personal interest, I'm sure. And I did advise them it was unsafe and closed the, you know, closed to access, but uh definitely did concern me that even foot traffic going across that bridge, you know, this. The potential risk exists if we don't do something about it sooner than later, at least my personal opinion.
Can I make a friendly suggestion? For all of the reasons that this is a complex conversation, your discussion has been sort of all over several topics, and I wonder if maybe we can treat. The two projects as discrete projects and maybe focus. Um, if if you think that you have enough information to make a decision, or if you have specific questions that you want Glenn and I to work on before you can make a decision. Is that, is that okay?
Uh, I have no, so I'm gonna jump in. Uh, Jake, I I have no concern with the. The estimates from Sam Browning Junior Trucking. Uh, the prices that I saw, the work that would be done. Uh, hearing that the timing could be started as early as Wednesday uh to remedy those emergent situations. Um, I would be in favor of moving forward and, you know, approving. The work to be done by that company.
Was that a motion?
I would second that as well.
The motion would have to be a little bit different. There has to be some other language in there. Um, I'm actually looking for, Brian, maybe you could help me out.
If if uh if you.
Go ahead, Brian.
I was just gonna suggest if you'd like to start on the North Street uh embankment. It could be something to the effect of a motion made to award the repair. Of the North Street Brook uh embankment along Key up Brook to Sam Browning Junior Trucking of Northfield, Mass. In the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred.
So, well, that is all the information I was looking for.
Perfect. I will second. Any other discussion on that one?
None.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 And then to the discussion the three of you have all been having with with Glenn, you've received two quotes for the bridge removal. So this is specifically the concrete bridge uh connecting Swamp Road to North Street. And so one came in from Clayton, excuse me, Clayton D. Davenport Trucking of Greenfield and the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. And then the second one was received from Sam Browning Junior Trucking of Northfield, Mass. And that quote was sixty-seven thousand fifty dollars.
Glenn, I have a question. Did did Sam Browning, I know he mentioned Wednesday for the uh the head wall on North Street. Uh, did he give any anticipation if if he were to be awarded the bid? Uh, his timing on the second part?
Uh, be- because he knows the situation, like I say, I'm I'm only assuming this, but because he's already, he would already be mobilized to repair the the wall. Um, that he would probably jump right on it as soon as the wall repair is done. I can, I can get answers to both.
Yeah, I was assuming that as well. Did he give a a timeframe on how long it would take him to do the uh repair to North Street wall?
Uh, Wednesday.
One day, one day job?
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe a long day, but it'll be one day.
Fair enough.
Typically, obviously, you award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. I'm assuming you may still want to apply that logic in this case.
I'll I'll make the motion that we award the removal and disposal of the Swamp Road Bridge to Sam. Brian Junior Trucking in the amount of sixty-seven thousand fifty dollars.
I can.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you all. I know it's very unexpected and and a lot of money, it seems like, for 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 little projects, but when. When people have the right equipment, there's a right tool for every job and. You know, they have it and we need to hire them, we need their assistance, so I appreciate the questions, the comments, and uh and the support.
Glenn, I I would assume both these projects would do, will need our police detail.
I've already reached out to Chief Hulse about that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, tomorrow I could refer you to get the contracts done with them.
Right, thank you.
Brian, would you just let Chief Hulse know too that there's been some pedestrian traffic in that area, and I don't know if they want to maybe tape it off. I know we're gonna have work done soon, hopefully very soon, but um. Just just make him aware and um I'll let him make any adjustments for safety he feels necessary.
We can run out and worry and put across it all also.
Any other specific questions uh around the. State of emergency, um, other areas that we didn't already cover? For tonight.
Can I just make a general PSD?
Yes, please.
We've been understandably, um, we've been receiving many phone calls from concerned residents about washed-out driveways from wet basements. And and other damage that they sustained. Um, and obviously, this is a very um anxiety-producing event. And uh and I don't know that many homeowners would have owned their property and experienced eight inches of water in a twenty-four hour period, so. Um, we're still getting reports that water is still coming off the mountains, that that many people are still having wet basements. Um, and and many of them are looking for guidance, and so they're turning to Town Hall, and I wish I could say that. Town Hall has all of the answers, but we 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 definitely don't have all the answers. We are encouraging folks to reach out to their homeowners' insurance. To have a conversation with any of their claims reps about what coverage may exist under their policies. We've been encouraging folks um to, if if the matter requires more. Um, technical work, there's there's professional companies, to Glenn's point, there's companies with the tools and the skill and the experience to dry. Out materials and to protect against mold and other. out materials and to protect against mold and other, and other conditions of, of wet surfaces like that. It's not that if folks contact Town Hall, we won't do our best to try to guide them, but it may be unsatisfying if we're simply redirecting folks to tools that they may already have in their toolbox. So we are letting people know that FEMA and MEMA have not agreed that there's funding available for private claims at this time. As Chief noted, we're still unsure if there'll be funding available for public claims. But if we do become aware, available or aware of any available funding through MEMA or FEMA, we'll be sure to notify the residents of those opportunities so that they can present their claims. We're just encouraging everybody to document what they've, what they've observed, what's occurred and, and the cost associated with those repairs. So for those who are interested in that information, that's what we're telling everybody.
And people can stay tuned if we do get any information like that, we will put it, you know, obviously discuss it here as we discuss the state of emergency, but we will also put that information out on the website, so people can look there for updates if any come along. Obviously, pretty soon we'll have some information around how private citizens could apply for the same type of CONCOM emergency work authorizations that, that the town just did for any repairs that they may have if they're near the waterways and had damage and need to do any kind of emergency repairs of the same sort. And again, there are contractors out there who specialize in that. If it's beyond the, the scope of what a homeowner can do themselves. Scott, did, I thought maybe you had a question before Brian added that, but maybe not.
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Bill, anything else on the state of emergency?
I'm all set.
Moving on to the next semi-emergent topic, discussion regarding the Flag Hill Sewer Project.
I believe you both have Derby and Pete on the call today.
Thank you both for joining.
So you all met about this topic, I think about a month and a half ago, two months ago, when we had a backup at the system. This is a, a small residential area of the sewer collection system, and it services, I believe, four homes. And at that time, we were able to work with a company that was able to go through and do some cleanup of the line. And we thought we had bought ourselves a few months, hopefully, and we had made a plan for both the wastewater department and the highway department to work together to, to develop a list of, of materials that we'd need to do the repair and then conduct the repair in-house with a new line running down Flag Hill Road connecting into North Street at the base of the hill. So that's been the plan, and, and materials are going to be ordered in the month of August so that we could do that work later in the, in the fall, hopefully, before snow flies. But then last week, we also, with all the groundwater experience and the backup. And we were working with the vendor again to get in there and take a look at tree roots and, and other things that may be clogging the pipe. Obviously, there were wipes and other materials also sourced in the pipe again. But nothing as bad as the, the last time we looked, and I believe this time in Derby can speak better to it, or Pete can, they identified that there was a cracked tile in there as well. So the oldest section of that system is, is clay pipes, so one of them is definitely cracked and failing. So I think we wanted to bring the, the conversation back to the, the board. We originally were trying to fit this work in to the schedules of both departments with the existing project load. We have now just added the state of emergency on top of that in repairs throughout town. So I, I don't know how realistic it is for us to get this all done with in-house staffing. Obviously Glenn's on the call as well. And then if it's not realistic to get that done, do we need to reconsider putting it out to, to procurement?
First, we're looking to, to Glenn and Peter Derby to, to give us your input on feasibility of doing this right now with the rest of the workload originally, just for Scott's benefit, you know, as Brian said, when we talked about this last, we had decided, you know, we already have a pretty full project plan for the summer for all of your departments, and we wanted to stick with those plans, knowing we had a interim solution that we felt would, would manage the the sewer system until the time we had for the repair, either in the fall or, or first thing in the spring to be done in-house, but obviously now this sounds much more pressing.
Yeah, and I had this conversation with, with Brian earlier about the topic, wanted to know if you need me to stay on for this tonight. And I, I know we were all in a month or so ago when we discussed this, it would have been a great project for us to do. For being honest, we, we probably still have a month to a month and a half worth of swale work repair, edge of the roads. We don't even know where we're gonna be for popper mountain repair. And we still have the mountain road that, you know, the side of the cemetery project that was approved at town meeting. I, I, I don't see us feasibly being able to get this done with, with what we have already. If we don't fix the edge of the roads and the swales now, come winter time and springtime with a spring thaw, we could be in big trouble with more damage.
Gentlemen, if, if I could say, I, I agree with Glenn. They have a ton of work ahead of them. We also have a busy schedule between the projects starting whatever that we, we had now have on the table. I would probably, would probably agree to say that this should probably go out to a procurement. Where, with this, the, you know, disaster that we just had, we're, we're all tied to the hill.
I, I agree, this does have to get done as soon as possible too, because just waiting for another backup, so hopefully that doesn't happen.
On that note, I have a couple of questions, but my first one is that crushed pipe, I mean, how? What, what's the current, you know? I guess what's the opinion of the department professionally about the situation? Are we, do we have any risk or is it just a fix as soon as possible? I mean, are we, do we have a potential for any kind of spillage or anything at this point, or is it more of just a failure that will get worse, and if we don't repair it, then we'd have a problem?
I, I haven't seen the actual footage of the filming, Derby could speak to it if he has. But from my experience, once you have a, a broken hole in the pipe, and, and if there's a, a section of it that's hanging in, the increased possibilities of, of wipes and whatnot getting hung up on it. It multiplies, and then also, who knows if we get any more weather events? Yeah, you, you could have a blowout. I, I would like to address this probably sooner than later. I think it would behoove us all before winter comes. That's, that's my two cents.
Yeah, the break is pretty, pretty bad, but I don't think, I think if anything, it's just seeping into the ground. We're still getting really good flow through it, but it needs to be fixed very soon, I think.
So then, if, if the board agrees that we should try to, that we don't have the resources to do this in-house now, then the question becomes where is the funding and what's the timeline? And if that's something we have to go, you know, we have to have a meeting to get funding approval, is that timeline realistic to the situation we're in, or, or are we in emergency where we need to consider other avenues to allow it to happen sooner? And I don't have the knowledge or expertise to answer that question, so.
I would, I would say you don't. We're about to get into a procurement that you're doing on the sewer line, which went up much higher than we had anticipated. We were lucky with our last two procurements that it was a wide swing between the low and high bids, where we still came in on budget. This one, as you will see, went over our initial opinion of probable cause from the engineers. So the, the market is, is definitely high right now for the bidding, and I, I would have a hard time guessing what that labor is gonna cost. I think we could procure the materials unless the guys on the call disagree with me. We could maybe get all of the structures and the material that we need in the house, but we're really focused on needing the equipment and the labor to do the install. Doesn't have to be engineered according to DEP, so from a regulatory standpoint, you can proceed with us defining the scope of the project. That's not my favorite choice, especially when you're contracting out with a, with a contractor, you want it done to spec. And if we have a very limited scope to define what the expectations are, that doesn't always give you a lot to hang your hat on. So I, I just wanna note that if we, if we go down this road without an engineer and save the money on the engineer and the time on the engineering, because it's not required, we would be going out to, to bid with myself and, and Pete and Derby drafting a specification, we'll do our, our best. But that doesn't mean that there's not something that an engineer would have caught and ensured was in there that we wouldn't have. Again, this isn't a huge system, I don't know that it's a, it's a huge concern, but I definitely want to make sure that we're as accurate and, and providing the best system that we can. And even with that being said, if, if the contractors that would normally bid on something like this are already full with other jobs, they're not going to submit a bid with a shirt, shirt pencil, they're gonna throw in a bid with knowing that they've already got jobs everywhere else, and that this is a small job that's not gonna take a lot of time, and if, if they get it, great, and if they don't get it, that's okay too. So I, I wouldn't expect that we're gonna get a competitive response by any stretch of the imagination. Big jobs, we're only seeing three responses.
If, if I could throw in my, my two cents about procuring the material, then hiring a contractor. I, I don't think you're gonna get a contractor that's gonna use customer-supplied material. Because if it's wrong, or if it's not something that they typically use, doesn't matter who the vendor is, now you've bought material that's gonna sit and they're, they're, they're gonna buy what, what they want to use. So I, I think I would stand back from doing that.
Then from that standpoint, then we definitely don't have the funding to do this project. We'd have to go to town meeting.
Is ARPA funding able to be used for this? Is it only?
It could be unless. You, you could use ARPA money on this, except I'm about to suggest that you use it on the procurement that you have in front of you. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't use it.
And I'd hope when we go through that, and maybe, maybe we need to come back to this, but we would have enough left, but maybe I didn't do my math right. I was just doing it quickly, so.
I, I don't know how much this is gonna cost you. I think, I think it's reasonable to anticipate a hundred thousand.
All right, I've asked plenty of questions, gentlemen.
Well, I think you just alluded to what I was thinking, the same thing is, is the funding source. I think if we just table this one for a moment, I'd like to see what the balance is after those funds are, are used. You know, while I agree that it could be, you know, a hundred thousand could be a, a benchmark of what it could be. There's some unknown costs in there, and it we were going to be able to procure the, the material, so there's some funding available already that we were gonna spend that was earmarked for, for purchasing. Rolling that into, and then whatever's left over from that, the other funding might get us there, but that's a you may have to circle back for this one.
Find one that. Bill, any questions?
Yeah, I, I guess. This sounds like a case of triage, and what's the most serious, what's important above what, what isn't, and I mean, I feel like, can we, we already have damage to, to certain areas, and you know, can we hold off on repairing some of those things and take care of the the sewer pipe on our own, or can we patch the sewer pipe and on, on just where the break is and then come back to it at a later time?
My, my understanding of where the break is, it's approximately thirty six, fifty feet down the hill, down the embankment?
Yeah, yep, and there's, there are four big trees right in the way, yeah.
Right. So it, it potentially could be very challenging to get, depending on where those tree roots are down there to do the clearing. And because of the, the location on the side of an embankment, it's, it's a trickier location to sort of open up, make the repair, close it back up. If you were keeping that sewer line and making the necessary improvements, I think we would recommend that it would make sense to call in a tree company, remove the trees, stump grind, do all of that work, open up the, the, the easement and replace the sewer line. I think we made it pretty clear that that's not the avenue that is recommended or what you all want to take, so bringing in a, the tree company and doing all that work to then abandon that pipe and put in the new section probably doesn't make, from a triage standpoint, the, the most practical sense. Unless you were gonna keep that line going down, down where it currently passes up private property.
Bill, can I, can I ask just directionally, was that coming from the, the place of like getting the funding, or was it coming from the place of, of just the number of projects we have going?
It's coming from, it, it's coming from, you know, that there's a lot of projects out here, and, and obviously we can't do everything. And what, what can we, what can we say, okay, this has to wait? It sounds like this can't wait, it has, it now has to be fixed, and so some of the roadwork, can, can we delay certain areas in order to do this? And not suffer being hit by contractors on, on a fee that's gonna be exorbitant just because everybody's already working, and, and so they, they get a cash cow. You know, I feel like we, we ought to find a way to, to just do it and delay something else.
I think I, I would just echo what Glenn cautioned earlier that I think we're all feeling that's a similar way. Bill, I think the only challenge is what, what do we put off, and if we put off something, we make the wrong judgment call, or we, we gamble and, and we say, well, that can wait till the spring, and the next erosion happens, or the next structure gets undermined. That weighs on you, obviously, we, we all have to make these decisions, and, and I know envy the three of you for having to make the final ones, but I think that's, that's going into the recommendations that hearing from us, and maybe some of the hesitancy from all of us is that that we understand the, the complexities of what you're, you're trying to decide on, but if we make the wrong judgment call and we put off maintenance of something else, and, and that also gets undermined. Have we, have we created another issue?
So I, can I jump in there, Jake?
Of course.
What was the cost to, I'm, I'm assuming we camered that line to see the break? And also clear whatever obstruction was in there? What was the cost associated with that?
I don't think we have the invoices in yet, do we Derby?
No, we don't. Brian, for the, for the first time that we had the problem, to have them run the cutter down, camera it, and they jetted it, it was about seven hundred to eight hundred dollars.
So it's probably getting similar the second time.
So. So my thought is, you know, and, and I've had, you know, I don't have broken clay pipes that I'm working with, but you know, I, I've had to do preventative maintenance on, on pipes that are prone to roots and things like that. To me, is it feasible, you know, pay or Darby to to do a preventative earmark, say twenty four hundred dollars? And say every few months, we're gonna spend the eight hundred dollars, and we're gonna go in, and we're gonna have them camera that. They're gonna clean it, they're gonna jet it, they're gonna make sure, we're gonna check on it to get us through this fiscal year where we can approach, uh, uh, attack this pipe next year, as was originally planned. And while I know the next year as was originally planned. And while I know the pipe is broken and it will most likely collapse. Earmarking that money and then checking up on it and seeing if we can buy enough time to do the repairs we originally planned. I don't know if that's feasible or not. I'm just, you know, I'm just spitballing here.
At this point, I think it would be a pretty big gamble. You're talking another five months anyways to get to the the end of the year, right? No, you're talking about eleven months, right? So, um, yeah, I I I don't know. I I I think that's a pretty big gamble. I mean, we don't know what the weather's gonna bring. We we could have another good rain event like we just had. And then that pipe we have filled up in two seconds.
In for for Bill, you you know, we're team players and we're willing to do whatever we have to. If the three of you ask us to put off other jobs to to do this, then then we'll do it. I just, I I know we have a lot of roadside work that if we don't get taken care of and it it could fail later down the line and cost cost more money, the money that's being saved on on this job could probably go into rebuilding the edge of a road. But again, we're we're capable of doing the work. If the three of you want us to do it and put off something else, all you gotta do is say so.
Can I just throw this out there? If we, you know, getting a bid for a small job like this, like, you know, Brian, you had mentioned would probably be difficult. However, if we were to shift focus on that and ask the highway to team up and do this job, are there other jobs that we'd be pulling the highway from that we could then put out to bid to have done for us so that we're not putting them off into winter? Both both rely on getting funding for it and and being able to do that. One seems a little more emergent where a heavy rainstorm could be detrimental, whereas the other ones, you're really talking about getting it before winter and before the next, you know, thaw season next spring.
So the the other big project. Yeah, the the other big project that we have is to repair the side of Mountain Road Gary Street in the cemetery. And the reason why we took that one on also is because the bids came back at half a million, I think in seven hundred thousand or seven hundred fifty thousand was the other job to keep the erosion coming away from the side of the cemetery. That's that was gonna, that was our big project for for this year. It was actually scheduled to start August ninth or August tenth, I think is what it was. And already because of the road repairs that now because of this wonderful rainstorm, that's being pushed off also to get the edges of the roads and all the swales and culverts cleaned out and ready to flow water again.
I I agree with what both of you were saying, and and this isn't optimal to to do, and and I don't wanna throw just throw money at the problem, because that's potentially what the cost could look like. However, we also have done a lot of work around project planning and trying to avoid, you know, exorbitant costs and and trying to do projects effectively and and efficiently and as inexpensively and with, you know, good quality as we can. And I look at, and we could pull up the list and go through that if we need to, or or at the next meeting, but I look at the list of projects that we have this year, and a lot of them are are grants and a lot of them are, you know, big projects. We have the Art Street Force Main, we have E I P Mill Sewer Project, we have the Mountain Road, we have Complete Streets, right? And that's and a lot of those are grant funding. And those aren't things that we necessarily wanna do something to to push off, right, and still have to happen. Part of me feels like if I'm looking at these numbers right, and I know we haven't gotten into the I P Mill Pump Station yet, but we had, you know, just around four. Brian, if I'm if I'm speaking incorrectly, please let me know, but I believe we had just over five hundred thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act in money that can be used for infrastructure, which includes sewer, and we have for a four hundred thousand dollar grant to do that project already. My quick math says we have a couple three hundred thousand dollars left, depending on how we decide to award that of that money. Now, we we probably wanted to use, I think we talked about using that to help offset some of the cost of Art Street where we're borrowing or other things that we're doing. What I would, what I'm proposing potentially is what would it look like? And maybe we don't have that answer tonight, but what would it look like to have tie-in bond, do a very, this isn't, this shouldn't be complicated, right, from an engineering standpoint? Do a very basic set of plans on what this looks like and do a procurement. If we have the funding there, then we can go out for procurement. What does that take us? Four weeks? To, you know, from four or five weeks if if tie-in bond is time to do it quickly? And then we'll have bids back, and we can decide at that point that it's two hundred thousand dollars, and that's ridiculous, and we're not willing to spend that, and we'll we'll explore a different avenue or take the risk of some sort of, you know, interim mitigation plan. But maybe someone needs that job. Maybe someone didn't win all those bids and someone comes in at seventy five or fifty or a hundred or whatever, you know, based on and to me, I think, I don't know what that number should be without having an estimated probable cost from an engineer that can give us a better basis on. Obviously, if we do it in-house, it's gonna be significantly different. I don't know what the reasonable going rate should be, so. I I guess I'm I'm saying, should we consider going through that? And and maybe I need to ask you, Brian and Pete, how long do we think that would take to get to bids back to know? And then make a decision. And I don't wanna put it off any longer than we have to, because it it's definitely not something that I think we wanna go through where with, if we can help it. But it to me, it takes us three, four, or five weeks to get to a point of of having numbers to work with to make this decision. I feel a lot more informed than guessing how much it may cost and what contractors may or may not bid.
If I had to guess, you're talking at least in total, seven to eight weeks. If I can get people working on it tomorrow, I have to get them out here. They need to come do whatever field work they have to quickly do, put together the proposal. You'd have to agree to engage time bond on the proposal. You have to get together the work, meet your approval for bid documents that you're willing to issue and then get it in the central register, and then we give at least three weeks for the responses. So I think that the tightest realistic timeline would be about seven to eight weeks. And then assuming that you can then schedule the work, you're doing the work in October.
So, so based on that timeline, I'm gonna say this, how about we circle back to the first question? What would it look like? And and I guess I'm gonna focus probably more on you, Glenn. I know Pete, you guys have a lot of projects too, but a lot of the field work is probably gonna be on your team. Is it reasonable to maybe, and and if the rest of the board agrees, have you looked back at the project list and all the storm work that's now required and damage that we had? And identify what would have to either be pushed out, or we'd have to contract out to have you do the work in by October, because I mean, we're talking about the same kind of timeline, right? We're talking about October work. If we contracted it, best case, so. So maybe that's, I mean, I don't know, we floated a lot of different ideas, but it it sounds like with that timeline, we're circling back to, maybe we don't even get it done in October. So. You know, without stretching your team too thin already, then what what project has come off the list this this year?
I I can certainly happy to review everything with Brian and in timelines and where we are with storm damage and we can get back to, unfortunately, so it's it's two weeks, because you're not meeting next week, correct?
We don't have it scheduled, but if we're talking about doing it in October, then I don't know if the two weeks matters. If we're talking about needing to procure it, then we could probably schedule a sooner meeting if we need to.
You have a you have a meeting scheduled for Saturday that if we needed to, we could amend your agenda.
That's a good point. We could tack it on to Saturday and and touch on it and know what to do then, you know, at least get that feedback from you by then, if if you think that's you have time to get that answer to us by then.
That's fair.
Bill Scott, does that sound like a direction we wanna go?
Yeah. There really isn't another alternative. I mean, the other alternative is still to go back to what we said, and that's just not doing specs and having it done, you know, specked in-house, but putting it together in-house and then having the work done off of that. And don't take any offense to this, you know, the the players that'll be drafting it. We've tried very hard over the years to have everything done to spec to make sure that we know it's good. We know it's gonna last longer than than any of us here. So I I would like to see I I I agree with you, Jake, on on let's let's bring this back on Saturday, Glenn, if that gives you enough time to just reevaluate. Given that timeline of October, that still gives several months, you know, before we get there to do it in-house, if that's even possible. But to further that discussion on Saturday, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, I I think we can, and I just, I wanna throw out there too that we're gonna be as of the twenty ninth, after the twenty ninth, we're gonna be one body short. Probably through the whole month of August until we until we hire a replacement. So the the month of August, we're gonna be down to just two people working on these road projects and everything else.
I think we called out the perfect storm. Bill, are you are you good coming back to this on Saturday and kinda directionally figuring out from there?
Sure, I I can work with Saturday.
All right, beaten Derby, obviously, if you can support Glenn and help with with your parts of that and, you know, timing, I know you have some large projects coming up as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I guess the the I guess to to reiterate that request, I think there's a couple pieces. One is, you know, Glenn, looking at your schedule and and what would need to give to make October happen. Second would be at least an exploratory call with tie-in bond, whether that's that's you, Peter Darby, or or Brian, just to to get a feeling from them on timing and and what that looks like, just to have that conversational item. And then we'll we'll probably know shortly here some funding options. And I think the third the third thing is kinda what what Scott said. If if we are limping along and potentially, let's say, we did have to go out to bed and maybe a contractor can't make it till spring, then what's a, do we have an interim plan? What's that look like? At least conversationally, what what would that look like from from Pete, from your team?
Okay.
Obviously, these are these are high level. We're not putting these on paper and signing them on Saturday.
Okay, we'll get it ready for the three of you.
Thank you all. Okay, on the next item, review the I P Mill Forest Surmaine procurement bid results.
Let's see. There's two memos. One is from me and the second is from Time Bond, did the bid opening. That's right, I gotta take meeting minutes. So, real quick, the high level, you issued an I F B. It's a procurement with the the goal of soliciting the, hopefully, the the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Time Bond was your engineer on this proposal. We released that procurement on June twenty third. We advertised it in all the legally required places. There was a non-mandatory site walk that Pete, Mariah, and our engineers hosted on July seventh. And then addenda one and two were both issued on July nineteenth. If you remember the procurement correctly, you agreed to structure it with a base bid and then two bid alternates, bid alternate one was a valve vault. And the board was pretty clear that the valve vault, even though we were gonna bid it as a bid alternate, was something that was highly desirable. Because it's gonna be very challenging and very costly to do it later on if you decide you wanted it. And then the second was to add the generators. The goal would be to have the site completely ready to go for a generator, but we just would not install and procure a generator. If bid two all two did not happen. So the bid deadline was this past Wednesday, the twenty first. As of that deadline, you received three sealed bids. The low bid was for a company called Baltazar Contractors, Inc. of Ludlow. We'll get into the exact breakdown on the next page, but if you were to take the base bid plus bid alternate number one, that price would be six hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. In terms of funding, and this is what the chairman was responding to, you had secured through Mariah's efforts, a Mass Works grant for this project. Four hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars are available for construction. So our goal was to get as much of this project to fit within that construction budget. Obviously, this this plan and and these funds were secured well before the recent explosion in the the bidding market in the supply chain. So when when you've agreed to put this out to bid, we did have a initial conversation about using some of the American Recovery Plan Act funds that were being sent to the town. They can be used for COVID wastewater, water, and broadband. You have a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars coming to the town directly. To date, we've received half of that, so there's a little over ninety one thousand dollars already in the bank account. And then there is three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars that is coming to the town in the process that has yet to be defined, called a county reallocation. So throughout the country, all the counties received funds. In Massachusetts, you abolished many of the counties, including Franklin. Therefore, Franklin County's assessment for Irving should be reallocated to us. And so that number comes from the chart that was issued by the state and the the treasury. But I have not seen clear guidance on when we're going to get that three hundred and thirty nine thousand. I just know that the first half of the one eighty three has been received. So going back to your bids. Here. Right here is your memo.
Why are you bringing that up, Brian? The Mass Works was five hundred thousand dollars, and the difference between that and the four oh one is the engineering cost, correct?
Correct. And engineering is from concept all the way through project administration and closeout.
Okay. So what we need to fund out of the four oh one and the ARPA money is just this?
Correct, correct. So you can see your three base bids in comparison to the opinion of probable cost. Obviously, they they all of them far exceed, and there's not a great swing between any of them. And in most of your recent public construction procurements, I've seen a very large swing. In some cases, the Art Street for Surmaine, there was a million dollar swing between the lowest and the highest bid. You're not seeing that in these bids, so these that that suggests to me that these these prices seem to reflect the market today. Nobody was particularly hungry, nobody was particularly careless in terms of what their bids were. These these three seem to be fairly close to what the market would would call for. So something was off in our opinion, the probable cost, it could just be all the escalation in the the market that we're seeing today, and it can be part of the response to the supply chain shortages and the material increases that we've seen. Bid alternate one, again, not a large spread in the bid alternates. Just recall that when you do this award, you have to, if you're going to award a bid alternate, you have to do them in the order that we presented them in the the contract, so we can't skip the two if we really wanted to. Now, we gotta go one, then two. And when you're looking for the lowest bid, you've gotta do the the aggregate. So if if the board's wish was to do bid one and base bid and bid alternate one together, we'd have to add all of those together for all three vendors and determine who's the lowest. In this case, because there was no great swing between any of these prices, if you add alternate one to those base bid prices, it's still the same order of lowest bidder. That doesn't change this time. And Time Bond did do a review of the references submitted by the lowest bidder, and they all came back positive with the ability to do the work, the complexity of the work with positive feedback on their performance. So it was Time Bond's recommendation that you proceed with the lowest bidder if you were going to proceed.
So my real quick math said that if we went with the recommendation of tie-in bond, which is to do with Baltasar and including alternate one. the recommendation of Ty and Bond, which was to do with Baltasar and including alternate one. First using the the Mass Works grant money and then moving on to the ARPA funds, we'd still have close to three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds remaining. If I I did my math correctly.
Yeah, your your math is good. It was high two nineties, two ninety-eight, something like that.
Yeah, that's what I got. And I guess at least for discussion, we should, you know, whether or not a fifty-eight thousand dollar generator. Because they would still be the lowest bidder is something we'd wanna fund.
Just a question I would have on that is reason we wanted to do the valve vault now is the difficulty and cost of doing it later. We don't see that same difficulty and cost in doing the generator at a future date, correct?
Correct.
The only thing fifty-eight thousand seems a little high.
The only thing that's Mariah and I sat with our engineers and went over this, the only thing that seems to be missing that we probably would want done is some conduit to be installed to the to the where the generator be located to pour that pad and make sure that everything's ready to go, so it's empty conduit that's been weatherized. It's ready for that installation in the future. That's the only thing that is not currently included in the base bid plus one. That we may wanna do just a little bit of change order, so you don't have to then cut back open the asphalt afterwards, once it's all been nicely prepared. The only thing you would probably have to do is that the system will be set up in the valve valve with one particular type of transfer switch for the power source, and it would not have been wired for the generator yet. So if and when you decide to put a generator in, we would likely just have to update the transfer switch. But we've done that on a few other projects before. They don't always, they're not always interchangeable with the generators when we've upgraded.
Any questions on the on the bid package or directionally which way everyone's leaning?
No questions on that. I do still. Pete, are you still on the call or Darby?
Yes, I am.
I'm just curious on your thoughts on the fifty-eight thousand for the alternate two.
For the generator?
Yeah.
Um, the generator, to be honest with you, the I mean, yes, as time goes on, the the cost of things go up, but the generator isn't gonna be really necessary there on site until you have you know, something down there that's gonna contribute to the pump station where you would need it as a backup power source.
Hold off then.
I I think we would be fine to hold off on a generator part, like what Brian had mentioned was, you know, in part of the scope of doing the the vault and the pad and everything there, put in the conduit that we'd need for the wiring, weatherize it. And the the transfer switch, Brian, if if I understood you, it's part of the project, but also a lot of times when you order a generator, that's part of the the specs of it, whether or not you want the transfer switch.
Right. So I don't think it's gonna be a formidable issue when when we go to add the generator at a later date.
Correct. I mean, the transfer switch in the long scheme of things, I would say get that when you get the generator, so you have the right one.
Right.
So just to be clear, base bid plus bid alt one does not include the concrete pads for the generator and the propane tank, doesn't include the piping, and does not include the transfer switch, correct?
Correct. That's all in alt two.
So what we're discussing considering is base bid plus alt one for the valve vault. And then a change order for the concrete pads and the piping, weatherized.
Correct. And the the conduit and the concrete are already priced out in your bid, so we already have a unit price for those things to derive a change order for. So that's something that we could sit down with your selected vendor and finalize.
I see, okay.
So if I could say something about that real quick, usually the pad in the conduit is specific location to the generator that's being installed. So if you did the pad in the conduit into the building, the generator that gets backed out at the time when you do it may not line up with the conduit. When you're raised somewhere. Some have a vault. I'm sorry. Some of the conduit locations under the generator are a small area. Some are could be like a two foot by two foot area. We've seen it in the past. Where it doesn't work out according to plan.
Now, if we're putting in a concrete pad anyway, how how big of an impact to the asphalt is it to cut to put the piping in? It doesn't sound that significant if you're already pouring it, gonna have to cut out and pour a pad next to it anyway, right?
It just needs to be cut and then patched, so. The enclosure, I I know I I I kept asking to make sure that I was really clear. So this will be enclosed in a fenced-in scenario like your other pump stations. So the the fence itself, that's part of the base bid, is of sufficient size that it will completely enclose the generator, the the tanks, the everything that needs to be in there. What won't be included is the new transformer that will belong to Eversource. That will sit outside of this enclosure. But everything else is included in that. So you're right, we would have to do some of that work. We'll have to patch the asphalt, but that will all be within the fenced area.
jog my memory, where exactly is this dropping in down there?
If you come down Paper Mill Road and you hit the bottom sort of a hairpin turn almost. If you were to go straight across towards the river, you're going to, you're trying to get to the the lowest point, there's actually a utility pole right about in the middle of a very large paved section. Approximately next to that utility pole is where this is slated to be installed.
In the area of the hydrant.
Near the hydrant, correct.
To me, you're talking about cutting the asphalt that's already in that caged area that's already not new, that's not no offense, Glenn, but it's 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 a road that hasn't been done recently. I don't I don't see.
Okay.
I'm beginning to value of doing the change order right now either.
No, no, usually the conduit comes up, you know, out of the building underground and up through the concrete. So if if it doesn't matter to whoever has to core a hole into the the vault of the building to get into the power supply, then it's, you know, it's no big deal. I was just thinking if you're thinking about doing the pad in a conduit, you could run into problems with the generator install.
So hold off on any proposed change orders?
I I'm not concerned about cutting the blacktop down there at all. It's, you know, it's fall apart, it's in a the area. My concern was that the cost of the pad and in the conduit and not knowing what the specific generator is.
Till later. Go ahead, Pete.
Well, the other thing is, there isn't a building there. It's it's the wet well with the pumps and rails, and then there's the vault with the control panels and everything. So the conduit would be coming out of that vault and just basically I don't know why you couldn't have the conduit come up out of the ground and then just run across on the pad to tie into the generator from the side, because that's that's been done before. That's how it is at Archery. It comes out of the generator, it runs on the concrete pad, it's not underneath, it runs on top, and then it goes into the building to the the original transfer switch.
Okay.
So just another reason why we don't need a change order then, is what I'm hearing.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, maybe we could consider piping coming out of the ground stubbed, but if that. Anyway, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna give my opinion is that I agree with the going with base bid plus alt one, and if we even considered any piping or any sort of change order, I would think that'd be something more done on site at this point. If the conditions indicate that that's more advantageous to do it now than later.
Agreed.
I agree.
And so I did prepare suggested is helpful.
It is. You have it right in front of me. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to award the procurement for the construction of the IP Mills Pump Station and Force Sewer Main Project to Baltasar Contractors, Inc. of eighty-three Carmelina Circle, Ludlow, Mass. Zero one zero five six in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and authorized Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
Thank you for that, Brian.
All in favor? Hi.
Gentlemen, we will get moving tomorrow morning.
Excellent. Actually, okay.
You going in order?
I think just I'm sorry, Brian.
I was guessing if you were going in order to the next topic.
I was. I was just gonna make one comment to the prior discussion. We we kinda said we'd have some idea on what funding was available, and I think at the end of that, there's approximately two hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and seven dollars left in the ARPA funding, approximately.
Approximately.
That that could be available for other sewer needs, so. At least gives us a funding source for our Saturday conversation.
Yes. And I will amend your your posting for Saturday to include this topic.
Thank you. Next item was review of the Irving Peg access, Peg Community Access procurement bid results.
So about a month ago, we all met and we discussed going forward with a professional services RFQ for a firm to or an entity to run your community access TV channel that you've been talking about for many years. And we drafted the scope of service, the board authorized it to be released on July first. Questions were due by July fifteenth, and I issued one addendum on July sixteenth. Because it's just a request for quotes, I just need to try to obtain three from firms that typically do this type of work, so I reached out to the local community access television stations around here. As of your bid deadline of July twenty-second, I only received one response, and that was from the Berniston Northfield Community TV, Inc. of Northfield, Mass, and they have submitted a price proposal in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars, and that is to operate the channel for a one-year period that would begin on September first and run through August thirty-first of the following year. Any questions or concerns?
I have no concerns. I make a motion to award the procurement for the Irving Peg Community Access Professional Services to Bernison Northfield Community TV Incorporated of Northfield, Mass, for a term of September first, two thousand twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of fourteen thousand to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
One second.
All in favor? Bye.
Bye.
We will also get that going. I think you saw maybe in the bid package that they were already putting together a list of proposed equipment that you would need to procure. If you recall, you and the citizens, well, I think it was three, four years ago, you went to town meeting and you appropriated thirty thousand dollars out of the account to buy the equipment. And to date, we have not spent any of that money, so it's all sitting there available for this. So I I assume that even if the contract doesn't begin till September first, that is very likely that in the month of August, you will see something from them introducing themselves and recommending some equipment purchases that you all could consider. And then we could at least get that order started for September so that hopefully we can get mobilized as quick as possible. I know that we have had a preliminary conversation with them about the idea of a hybrid meeting format like you've all talked about. How we can stream online and also on the TV as well as be in person as you move forward, and I know that they have some ideas on how to do that, so. Hopefully, this is hopefully this is moving in the vein that you all are hoping.
Sounds good. Next topic, review of the Building Plumbing Gas and Wiring Inspection Professional Services, MOU, memorandum of understanding with Franklin County Regional.
It is time to renew your FCA CIP agreement. And this is a three-year, or the proposal is a three-year contract with for COG to offer this service for you. It was a bit of an overview of what the project, what the program is and what they've done to date for us. The fee has not changed. In several years, it's still seventy-six hundred dollars a year.
Any questions or concerns with the level of service or continuing?
I have no concern.
None.
Make a motion, we enter into the memorandum of understanding between the Building Plumbing Gas and Wiring Inspection and zoning enforcement Professional Services in between the Franklin Regional Council of Governments and Town of Irving on July twenty-sixth for a three-year agreement ending on, I'm assuming that's a June thirty, right, Brian?
Correct.
Ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Get that back to for COG tomorrow.
Review of the FY twenty-two Sledge Hauling and Disposal memorandum of understanding with Franklin County Solid Waste Management District.
This is one of those agreements that we do every year with the district. And it's only a one-year term, so this will be through June thirty of twenty twenty-two.
Any concerns?
None.
Make a motion, we send the MOU by between the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District and the Town of Irving for sledge hauling and disposal through June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor? Bye.
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 Issuance of cemetery deed numbers five twenty-three through five thirty-one.
And you will notice that every one of them is made out to a different individual.
I did.
Part of that is by request of the individuals buying them, but part of that is also the the town clerk is 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 working on ways to improve the accuracy and and maybe going, if he's got more to add, can speak to this as well. Sometimes we have people who will buy, I'm making this up right now, but they'll buy four lots. And they will hold on to them for many years, and it will not be clear to the town who was ever intended to be buried in those four lots. And then all of these years have gone by, maybe the original owner is no longer with us, and there will be all these questions about who who were these lots actually intended for, who is getting buried there, and not that any of that is really the town's primary issue. But it makes it a little challenging when we get to these these matters where funeral arrangements are being planned and and Glenn is trying to coordinate services with the the funeral homes. And so the it becomes even more complicated when they then want to transfer those deeds to somebody else. So the town clerk is proposing that from now on, instead of having many deeds issued to a single landowner, it may just make more sense if it can be specific to be specific for who the intended owner of that particular lot is. So in this case, every one of these have a different landowner. So I would say, if you don't mind, if we could do the motions by deed number for the lot number and the owner listed. Um and the owner listed. I know that's a lot.
That's fine. I'll give you a break from chat, I make a motion that we issued deed number five twenty-three lot number. Uh one three five nine to Brandon Kennedy, seven B Pratt Street, Irving, Mass. Moving right along, uh make a motion that we issue deed number five twenty-four, lot number thirteen sixty. Uh to Kristen Kennedy, seven B Pratt Street, Irving. Motion that we issue. Deed number five twenty-five, lot number thirteen sixty-one to Karen Kennedy, seven B Pratt Street.
Second.
Make a motion that we issue deed number five twenty-six. Lot number thirteen sixty-two to Gladys Rachel Silva, seven B Pratt Street. Make a motion that we issue deed number five twenty-seven, lot number thirteen sixty-three. To Raymond Anthony Silva, seven B Pratt Street.
Second.
All in favor, bye.
Make a motion that we issue deed number five twenty-eight, lot number thirteen sixty-four to Sharon Marie King, seven B Pratt Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion that we issue deed number five twenty-nine, lot number thirteen sixty-five. To Megan Ann King, seven B Pratt Street.
Second.
Take a motion that we issue deed number five thirty, lot number thirteen sixty-six to Brenda Silva, four Central Street.
Second.
All in favor, bye.
And I make a motion that we issue deed number five thirty-one, lot number thirteen sixty-seven, Tim Cronin and for Central Street.
Second.
All in favor, bye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, that covers the agenda for this evening. Any other topics or items for discussion that we didn't? Cover.
Can I add something about the cemetery, I'm sorry?
That topic has passed.
With that being said, we're we're down to fifty-eight vacancies now. Um with the sale of all those, and I know we've talked about new cemetery locations and planning. For a while now, um it's creeping up on us very quickly. We've looked over some town-owned properties that we have. One at the top of Mountain Road, uh which was, I think was supposed to have been the sludge dump at one time. And now a potential site for a water source. Uh behind the police station, which I believe is landlocked. Um we would need a road and or a rail crossing to get to it. Right, or the opportunity maybe in front of us to purchase property. Or the potential to purchase property on top of Mountain Road. There seems to be fifty-eight acres up there that Brian and I have talked about. But our vacancies are getting very, very slim now, and I know we have a lot of projects. And a lot of money that's being spent right now, but. I I don't know how to fast forward this or what we need to do now to either start. Asking for people if they want to sell some property or explore the town-owned parcels that we already have.
So. Did we also have one on Old State that we were adding that mix?
We do, it's they're part of the Guinness property down by the old cemetery. It's it's down in a hole, and unfortunately, there's a a drain off the state that runs down through there too. Um and there's a lot of alleged sorry sticking out of the ground down there.
Okay.
So the way that we need to proceed. It's twofold, we need to find a firm that is is skilled in. Working with towns to identify new cemeteries. Uh there's, I'm sure, some geological work that would need to be done on any potential site to see what the the composition of the soils. I mean, as Glenn can attest, the Irving Center Cemetery is a mix of nothing but sand and rocks. And so you you've sold a lot and you think you're good to go until you go to prepare the site and you hit a boulder. Um so we want to have a sense of what we are about to obtain as a as a cemetery, and then we need to have an opinion of probable cost. Uh that the three of you can consider and then bring to town meeting. Um and we would need this whether we're using a piece of town-owned land or if you were procuring a a piece of of private property for this use. Um so I know that Mariah had reached out earlier in the year to her professional organization just to find out who other towns have been using. There are some engineering firms in the state who. Who have done this work in the in the recent uh past, who uh came well recommended. So we could seek proposals, you did get uh fifty thousand dollars, I believe, appropriated at town meeting for this purpose to work on this project. So my recommendation to the three of you all is that we would work with Glenn to identify. Firm that would help him um develop a a scope of what he's looking for. What what would be ideal for a cemetery, and then if there are any town parcels that we can identify as potentially being worth reviewing. We would apply those standards and that review to those town parcels. If you look at this and say there's no town parcel that meets what Glenn's looking for and what the board is ultimately looking for. We can put out a request for proposals to the public. That the town is seeking land, and we would describe what we're looking for, how many acres. Uh whether it needs to start to be cleared, whatever it is that you're looking for proximity to particular roadways. And see if if the private property owners have any land that meets what you're looking for and would like to bring it forward at a price. And that's how, that's how you acquire land if if we don't already have a parcel that we need because of its unique. Uh characteristics, I'm not sure that we have a parcel that we've identified that's privately owned that we could claim is unique enough. It's the only parcel that would work for a cemetery. Um so we would have to do a public process.
I mean, at the end of the day, that's that's why we started funding this, right? So I will say, one of the conversation items I thought was to potentially put out. A communication to the townspeople about anyone who has deeds that they no longer need or wish to. To.
Sell them back.
Or sell back, yeah, I believe that was the term we used. It may be worthwhile to attempt to move on that project at some point this summer as well. Or this fall to to potentially replenish a little bit as they're depleting fast and we don't have a new plan yet.
I could definitely speak to the town clerk about that and see if uh if he's got a list of parcels that have been purchased but not. Um utilized, and we could send out a mailing to to individuals. In the meantime, would you be open to receiving some engineering proposals? To do this work to assist you with this?
I would, yes.
Yeah, yes, I would, I was gonna ask, do you need any sort of official motion to have that started or just want to get going on it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Glenn to identify just some some basics of what we need. And uh and Mariah to see what she learned from talking to some of her peers. About what their lessons learned from doing this recently. Um I also had already started the conversation with the the agents of the Board of Health because a cemetery has to be. Uh approved through the Board of Health regulations as well. So um so I will get all of those pieces together, make sure we have at least the semblance of a good procurement. And I can run it past the three of you to make sure that you think that the scope is clear enough of what you're looking for in the engineering proposal. And then I can take that out and go get you uh some prices.
Maybe it is a possibility of looking into the burial policy also, because right now your policy is. Uh two burials per lot, whether it's two cremations, a cremation in a full, or a full and an infant full. Um these lots are forty-two inches wide by ten feet long. If the family's just being cremated, it's a lot of wasted space just for two cremations. Maybe if they're cremation lots, maybe we can add more to them.
I think what we would, what we would need to do on that topic and and. Glenn and Mariah have spent a lot of the time talking about, so the challenges with your current regs and what. Uh the evolution of of uh cemetery regulations looked like today. Um and so I do think that that's a really wise. Uh piece that we should probably include in this engineering proposal, somebody that's going to be able to sit with all of us. And make recommendations on either how to update our cemetery regulations townwide. Or if Irving Center's cemetery regulations need to remain as they currently exist. And then maybe we adopt something more modern uh for whatever is being proposed for the new cemetery. I think we need that transition, some of the lots that we already have, they've already been buried and structured in a particular way. Uh we may have to continue some of those practices, even as we're we're transitioning to a new cemetery, but Glenn's right, there's there's a lot of. Space that's not being taken advantage of because of the way our regulations are established. Um and it it probably makes sense to think of this in a holistic manner.
Okay. If there are some recommendations that fit the current cemetery that might help along the way, I mean, I think we're open to hearing that as well in a proposal for changes. Uh am I correct that we set those regulations, Brian?
The uh the uh summit, the cemetery commissioners do set that. Uh that's the issue that I brought up to you all earlier, the town moderator has reappointed you as the cemetery commissioners. Um we need to adjust that when we're going through the town code and uh. And permanently make it so that the select board serves as the cemetery commissioners, but yes, the the town moderator has reappointed you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, any other items for tonight?
I'm all set now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Glenn, thank you everyone who joined, uh our next meeting is a sidewalk, ten AM. Uh followed by a. Public meeting to discuss the complete street proposals for. At the senior community center and we will continue the discussion around the.
So I will, I will send, we've already drafted the the agenda, but I will modify it to include flag hill. I'll send that out to the three of you, we're gonna begin our sidewalk on Saturday, ten o'clock over at the park on Central and Park Street. We're gonna walk the the proposed um sewer, sewer, excuse me, the sidewalk improvements with the residents who are interested in discussing it. And then we are going to migrate down to Pratt Street. And gun to have a conversation with the residents in that neighborhood about the proposed improvements for that neighborhood. And then at noon, we're gonna reconvene approximately up at the senior community center. Um to put the plans up on the on the projection screen to answer any questions folks may have there. Um and to determine whether or not the three of you are ready to move forward with those those bid documents. Uh your engineer will be on hand that day, along with Glenn and Mariah and myself.
Sounds good. Alright, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good evening.
Oh, good evening.